Good afternoon. I'd like to call the order, the November 5th meeting of the City Planning Commission. Ms. Brown, call roll.
Commissioner Michel.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Taylor.
Present.
Commissioner Shook.
Present.
Commissioner Diaz.
Present.
Commissioner Black.
Present.
Chairperson Taylor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. I'd like to recognize Commissioners, Commissioner Shook and the Plan Commission's creed and approval of the agenda.
The Newport News Planning Commission is mandated by state law and its members are appointed by City Council. Section 15.2, Tac 2210, the Code of Virginia states in part that every locality shall create a planning commission in order to promote the orderly development of the locality and its environment. The statutory purpose is to improve the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the citizens and to plan the future development of the communities. In serving this statutory purpose, the commission invites comments at the public hearing of its interested citizens of matters before it and welcomes your presence. Chairperson Taylor, a move we adopt the agenda before us.
Second.
It's been moving properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any polls? All right, the next item on the agenda will be the invocation by Commissioner Michel.
Let's pray. God, we recognize that you have already told us what you understand to be good and what you require of us, and that is to do justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly before you. So my prayer today is that we would all be the living manifestation of those words in this meeting, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Next on the agenda, we have the pledge allegiance led by Commissioner Black.
Please stand and join me in the pledge to the flag and to our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all for that. I'm sure, and I'm going to rest assured that all the commissioners had a chance to look at the minutes from the October 15th meeting. Do we have any corrections, admissions, or changes to the minutes?
Chairperson, Chairperson Taylor, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
It's been moving properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
I also abstain.
Also?
I was not present.
And we have one extinction for 52.
Two.
All right. Any other, any kind of comments? With that being said, the minutes will be accepted as presented. First item on our agenda is a condition of use for, I'm sorry, a change of zoning. The item is change of zoning CZ 2024, Tac 0001, Fort Eustis Investment Partners LLC, and that will be presented by Commissioner Glaser.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As you may recall, this case was remanded to Planning Commission by City Council in March of this year. Just to refresh your memory, this is a request for a change of zoning from R4 single-family dwelling to R7 medium-density multiple-family dwelling with proffers. Fort Eustis Investment Partners LLC is the applicant and owner. The properties are located at 628 and 634 Old Fort Eustis Boulevard and contain a total of 6.29 acres. Currently, they are occupied by a vacant, by vacant land and a single-family home. North of the properties is the Newport News Park on property zone P1 Park. East and south, we have single-family homes, part of the Wood Creek PRD on property zone R5 low-density multiple-family dwelling. And south and west, we have Woods of Jefferson Apartments on property zone R7 medium-density multiple-family dwelling. As background, on February 5th, 2025, the Planning Commission voted to recommend denial of change of zoning application CZ 2024 0001. The denial reflected concerns expressed by adjacent property owners that the proposed apartment buildings were located too close to their property lines, potentially infringing in their privacy. On February 25th, 2025, City Council voted to deny the reselling request. However, on March 11th, 2025, the City Council reconsidered their decision and voted to remand the item to Planning Commission and provide the applicant time to work with the community prior to its reconsideration. In response, the applicant hosted two community meetings on August 7th and September 11th, 2025, at Woodside High School. The Department of Engineering stated, um, sorry, the revised site plans shown at those meetings responded to the neighbors' concerns as well as the Planning Commission's concerns, and they showed this site plan that shows a 40-foot separation between the buildings and the property line. The revised site plan also shows a 20-foot landscape buffer. The revised proposal, the applicant has revised the proffer statement to include five proffers that if approved, will govern the development of the property. The revised proffer statement clarifies that the applicant will implement all recommendations of the TIA prepared by McPherson Consulting and accepted by the City Department of Engineering, including the construction of a tapered turn lane along Fort Eustis Boulevard, the widening of Old Fort Eustis Boulevard, and full movement entrances to the proposed development along Old Fort Eustis Boulevard. The Department of Engineering stated that by implementing the recommendations of the approved TIA, the applicant will effectively minimize potential negative impacts and maintain the level of service of the roads directly affected by the project. The proffers also include, as mentioned earlier, a revised site and landscape plan with a 40-foot setback for the proposed buildings along the eastern property line. Additionally, the applicant is specifically proffering the landscape plan that includes the 20-foot transitional buffer areas along the southern and eastern property lines where the property abuts R5 low-density multiple-family dwelling. The applicant states that they will preserve healthy existing trees within the buffer and supplement them with additional trees and shrubs to adequately screen the proposed development from the adjoining properties. In conclusion, and based on the proposed revised plans and proffers, as well as the applicant efforts to address prior concerns, staff reiterates the recommendation that the Planning Commission recommend approval of change of zoning CZ 2024 0001 for the properties located at 628 and 634 Old Fort Eustis Boulevard from R4 single-family dwelling to R7 medium-density multiple-family dwelling with proffers. Are there any questions?
Commissioner, any questions for Plan Mr. Saul? Hearing none, seeing none. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I would now like to officially open up the public hearing. I have quite a few cards, but I'd like the applicant to present first, please. Please come forward and state your name, your address.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the commission. My name is Tyler Rosé. I'm an attorney with the law firm Williams Mullen. My business address is 222 Central Park Avenue, Suite 1700, Virginia Beach, Virginia. I want to thank Saul for the presentation and staff for the hard work on the application and recommendation of approval. As Saul mentioned, this matter was previously before the Planning Commission and City Council in February, and during those public hearings, there was a lot of community input regarding the proximity of the buildings, and as Saul highlighted, there has been some revisions to the plan. So at the request of the Planning Commission City Council, we did conduct additional community meetings, have worked on the last eight months, working with staff, input in the community. And if you include the prior two public hearings and then the community meeting prior to the City Council meeting, there's been basically five opportunities for public input on this. So there's been a lot of engagement with the community on this project. So as Saul noted, the primary modification of the project is to move the entire site about 20 feet west. And so that would provide a 40-foot buffer between the building and then the property line. And so I would like to actually turn your attention to A14 in your packet. It's the setback diagram. I don't know if you could publish that, but I think this is illustrative of kind of the visual impacts on this neighboring property. Yeah, so we would be, yeah, for the audience, this right part here. So this is presenting the apartment building on the far left side of the page, and then the houses on Longleaf Drive that are on the eastern boundary of the property on the right side. So you'll see the 40-foot buffer, the 20-foot landscape buffer, and this is showing a visual representation from the third floor of the apartment building. So in addition to evergreen trees that will be planting, which should reach about 16 feet after about two and a half years, and then the eight-foot privacy fence, there's also going to be remaining mature deciduous and coniferous trees there as well. So the entire buffer will include large existing trees and then also infill with smaller trees and privacy fencing in addition to an expanded 20-foot buffer. So there is a much bigger buffer between the property and the existing homes on the right side of the, on the center of the property there. So we've tried to address and accommodate any of those privacy concerns. As you can see here, the sightlines are such that there should be minimal, if any, impact on the adjacent properties in terms of privacy concerns. And as Saul also mentioned, there's an extended landscaping buffer along the eastern part of the property and then also the southern part of the property, which are the two sides of the property that abut the R5 zoning in the Wood Creek neighborhood there. Additionally, the, as Saul mentioned, we've proffered the TIA findings, and that was, the TIA was done by a professional engineer that considered not only the entrance to this property, but all the surrounding intersections as well. And the findings that we've proffered are a result of their professional analysis, and the City Department of Engineering has reviewed the TIA and found it to be sufficient to mitigate the impacts of the project on the surrounding roads. So I would also like to turn your attention to A13, which is just the concept plan, just to kind of go over some of the road improvements as well. So on Fort Eustis Boulevard, as Saul mentioned, there's going to be a 200-foot dedicated right turn lane, which isn't there anymore. Would you like me to?
Yes, it's a chance, I would like the rest of the audience to also see this one.
Yeah, I'm just trying to. Am I going the wrong way?
In the wrong direction, yeah.
It's that one.
Is it loga? Okay. All right. Well, the, um...
There it is. There it go.
Okay, well, so the, it's showing the dedicated new right turn lane off of Fort Eustis Boulevard, the widening of Old Stable Road there, and then also the widening of Old Fort Eustis Boulevard to be 32 feet wide. So additionally, if you look at the design of the road, it'll be a dedicated right turn lane onto Fort Eustis Boulevard, and that portion of Old Fort Eustis Boulevard results in a dead end, and it would only be serving this property. So there wouldn't be any kind of cross traffic with the surrounding neighborhood. Additionally, from the prior meeting, I understand that there was some concerns about access through the Wood Creek Drive entrance of the neighborhood, which is off of Jefferson Down, the southern part of the property. If you take that entrance, you have to go Wood Creek to Cherry Creek to Old Fort Eustis and around. So while we can't prevent people from accessing the community in that way, this would be a dedicated right turn lane into the property, mitigating any of those impacts and incentivizing folks to use that. So as a result of the TIA, that was the most direct impact, and we've committed to making those road improvements. And additionally, once the project is fully developed, if, we'll do a warrant analysis, and if required, we'll put in a traffic stoplight at the intersection of Fort Eustis Road and the Old Stable Road there as well for access. So those items are proffered in the proffer statement we provided, and additionally, the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, not only this comprehensive plan, but previous comprehensive plans for medium-density development. It's consistent with the surrounding R7 development to the south, the Woods of Jefferson, which is also a three-story apartment complex that is also abutting the Wood Creek neighborhood as well. And it's also consistent with the City Council goals of improving quality housing in the area. This will be market rate housing, quality product, and it's also consistent with the recent city housing study and the strategic housing initiative plan to add 21,000 units by 2050, that's 700 units per year. And a few of the goals of that are to vigorously pursue housing production of all types to meet sufficient demand, increase supply of high-quality apartments and starter homes for young working people and families, stimulate market rate development, provide attractive housing options to attract retain workers, and encourage high-density development. So this project satisfies and accomplishes several other goals of the housing plan. So in conclusion, this is a updated project reflecting eight months of community input, addresses the concerns to mitigate the community concerns, while also still providing high-quality product to the city that's consistent with the housing plan and the comprehensive plan as well. So thank you for your time. I respectfully request a recommendation of approval. I'll stand by for any questions. I do have applicant representative here, Alvin Keels, who would like to also speak to, he has a card right behind mine, so if he would be able to speak just behind me on behalf of the applicant to a few of the aspects of the project, I appreciate that as well.
Thank you very much. Any questions for, I'm sorry, your last name, sir?
Rosé.
Mr. Rosé.
Yeah, Mr. Rosé, did you attend any of the community meetings?
I did not. My, I had a, my wife gave birth to our second child, like, the day before the first one, and I honestly have slept like three hours since then. So unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it, but I understand they were very well attended. Mr. Keels was there, so he can speak to any of that, as any kind of input from the community. But my understanding is they were properly advertised and well-attended.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. No questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Keel, do you plan to speak, sir? Please come up and state your name and your address and...
Yes, thank you. My name's Alvin Keels. My address, my business address is 999 Waterside Drive, Suite 1300, Norfolk, Virginia, 23510. And I appreciate the opportunity to come in and speak. I was not at the first Planning Commission meeting. I don't, I'm not going to reiterate much on what Mr. Rosé spoke on, on the actual project. I want to speak more to, you know, the process, the failed process the last time. I feel I owe this commission an apology. I've already apologized to City Council on March 11th. As the developer, I felt the last time around, we rushed. Maybe we, you know, were a bit ambitious in our thinking, but nevertheless, we rushed, and we didn't give the community, nor the commission, nor the council, a fair opportunity to really evaluate this, this project. And as a result, because my partner is a well-known, you know, community hero, it was a lot of negative rhetoric around the decision to deny. A lot of things were said, some people came at City Council officials. I don't know if it was any words directed towards you guys or anything like that, but as the developer, I want to take full accountability because the process could have been handled better, and I'm glad actually that it did get the opportunity to come back around because we have had an opportunity to get a lot of community input. I'm sure you'll hear from some of the community today, you know, but we did have two community meetings, three since we met with you guys, because we had one right before City Council, and then we had two at Woodside High School. You know, I think this is an outstanding project. I think it'll be beneficial to the community. We're committed to bringing a high-quality project to the area. You'll hear from, I'm sure, other, others that have, you know, met with me about this project, but we have gotten a lot of feedback from the community. And one of the main takeaways was that, you know, we wanted to move the property over and give some additional buffer to, from the proposed community to the existing homes. And then also, you know, we're going to do everything in our power to minimize the traffic impact with this, with this community. We've gone through, you know, an intense traffic study, and we'll follow all of the recommendations definitely from that study. I just want to give you guys the thanks for allowing us to come back. I think that this has been a very informative process for us, and we're going to do everything we can to bring a quality project to Newport News if given opportunity. So that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Keel, before you leave? Any questions for Mr. Keel? Thank you very much, sir. Okay, before I call my next cards, or actually go into the cards, I'd like to set the timer because I know we have, I have a collection of cards here, and I would like to set it at least three minutes each. Okay? So please adhere to it. The clock is right below me, so if you see it, I can't see it, but I'm sure I get a light flashing somewhere that tells me that you exceeded your time. So with that being said, I have a collection of cards, and in no particular order, I'm just going to call you. Please come forward, and please, I apologize now if I screw up your name, which I know I am, because I can't even read some of the handwriting. So I apologize for that now, but please come forward, state your name and your address, and you have your three minutes. Oh, man. What if I call your address and you state your name? Because this one, I can't get through. I'm going to call a friend, and that still didn't work.
I thought they were near.
Yes, I agree. 766 Longleaf Lane. I have no clue, you can point to everyone in the room, ma'am, I still would know who that was. Please come forward, state your name and your address, and again, I apologize for this because...
Hello?
Put the mic down to you, ma'am.
Good day.
Put the mic down. Yes, go ahead.
First, I want to give you some printouts.
No, no, please state your name and your address first.
Okay, oh, it's already gone. Titana Rukun, Sanresix Longleaf Lane. So I want to start, earliest this year, you voted against this project, which has since been renamed to Iverson Landing. I was hoping in between then and now, that changes would be, have been made, address the reasons why it was rejected. I'm frustrated to learn that the biggest issues with development have not been addressed. First, let me start with flooding. The land is swampy and floods easily. You can see, yeah, I have this picture several give you a pass, so you will be able to see it was like a small rain, and it's like just a swamp. And we were told that proper drainage would be built to protect surrounding land and infrastructure, but at the last developer meeting, we noticed that there were no changes to the plan, and engineers told us that the project is approved, when the project will be approved, the city will take it more seriously. And I am prepared to approve something without this critical detail committed to, in writing. Also, the trees, they said that we plant trees, and I'm wondering what kind of trees? Will they be a native species to the planted, planted during the time of the year when they should be planted? We have seen instances where developers plant their own trees at the wrong time, the trees die, and then the civilians are left to deal with the... die, and then the civilians are left with, to deal with the site and the noise. Traffic-related safety concerns is the biggest one. We noticed next to nothing was done to address traffic-related safety concerns. Look at the plans. Do you expect hundreds of people to safely navigate that specific area? They have, they have only one small road to travel on. And other people, our neighbors, will explain everything about that. So in the end, I want to, like the zoning concerns, the problem is the land simply is not right for the type of apartment complex. Fort Eustis and Old Fort Eustis are too close together, the land is swampy, and there are limited options for road expansion, meaning there will always be a major safety risk, no matter what you do. When something like this possesses such a huge risk, risk to a public safety, and when there is enough evidence that shows it will be difficult to find a way to manage the land in a way that allows people to safely enter and exit their property. It's a big sign that maybe the land shouldn't be zoned for that kind of housing. Single-family housing is now, and they can build that. And even if you disagree, I hope that you agree that the current plans and proffers poses a huge threat to the region and shouldn't be approved until the problem has been adequately addressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so very much.
Can I give you printouts for...
You can give those to Ms. Brown.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys have any questions?
No.
And we still, I didn't, still didn't get her name. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person, next card I have is Sean Fowler.
My name is Sean Fowler, 11 at 732 Longleaf Lane, Newport News, Virginia. Just want me to know when you guys are ready.
Yes, good.
Okay, I'm waiting on the clock. There we go. Okay, so I'll make this short and sweet, since I don't have a lot of time. I was hoping that I wouldn't have to stand here today, because as you well know, the plans were presented and rejected earlier this year, and I was hoping that the city and the developer would have enough time to work out a lot of the issues that were concerning. And unfortunately, it looks like none of them were really worked on. The drainage, as mentioned before, that was a big concern. Nobody even addressed it whatsoever. When it comes to the buffer zone between the homes, the one thing that that diagram is not showing you, and it takes somebody who lives here to see it, is that there are very few mature trees in that area. Just about everything is shrubland, so, or basically small shrubs. So once you go beyond a 20-foot point, just about every tree is going to have to come down. So that privacy that was such a big concern to you guys is still going to be a major, major concern, and planting evergreen trees, which tend to die quickly, I don't think is going to resolve that issue. But the big, major issue, and it's really the only reason why I'm here, is I'm so concerned for public safety. Look, I looked at the McPherson Traffic Impact Study. This is even before our meeting. I looked at it. I also am aware of the engineer's co-signing on it. And while they did a great job of illustrating the traffic impact on Jefferson and Fort Eustis Boulevard, what they did not account for, and I, I think it's just they don't live here, is putting hundreds of people in this spot to where there's only one lane to get out of that property. Now, I love the fact that they expanded the road so people can get in safely from Fort Eustis, that's a good thing, I think we all like that. But what it has not accounted for is that that little intersection at Old Stage Road can fit two or three cars at any given moment, and you, during rush hour traffic, which means in the morning when people are going to work, going to school, or when they're coming home, they have that one road to get out of. So if there's two people wanting to turn into Old Fort Eustis Boulevard, what that means is you're going to have a traffic jam from, you know, the people who are paying there just to leave. And there's nothing put in place to resolve that. And on top of that, you're going to have four people competing for the same space. You have people coming from one end, people coming from the apartments, you're going to have people merging from Old Fort Eustis Boulevard in this tiny, little space. So I see this as incredibly unsafe. Never mind the fact that there's going to be children at this apartment complex, they're going to be probably running to the Newport News Park, because it's right there, it's a wonderful park, and there is nothing in place at all to make sure that our most vulnerable citizens are actually going to be protected. And it's very frustrating for me that we've had all this time to do something about it, and nothing has been done, and people are going to get hurt because of this. Look, I'm not against the development, I think having more homes is great, but you know what's interesting? I looked at it, there's over 700 apartments available right now in the price range. We have plenty of them. But I will say this, in closing, would you want to live here knowing that? Would you want your family to live here? And do you think that, that land is appropriate for that type of apartment complex? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you.
Any questions at all?
Any questions for Mr. Fowler?
Just how, just a point of clarification.
Uh huh.
Because you mentioned one way in, one way out, but I see two driveways. Is that correct?
There's two entrances to the property.
There's two entrances, okay. I just wanted, as a point of clarification.
Two entrances to the property.
The proposed development.
Yeah, the proposed, the new proposal has two entrances instead of one.
Where's the second entrance?
You have to go back, it'd be on the other map, if we could flip it from here.
I think he's talking about Stable, Stable Road.
But both of those entrances...
Are on the same road.
Are on this, access the same road.
So here's, here's what I'm talking about, right? Because there's no, I'm talking about the exit in from the property, right? If you live there and you're wanting to go somewhere else, you have one small road, there's no two roads, there's no other way you can get there, you can only go down Old Fort Eustis Boulevard, and then you either have to go across that, well, no, there's no way around it, you have to go through Old Stable Road in that section right there. That is the point of contention. So it's not the entrance into the property that's the problem, it's getting out.
It's getting to the property, getting out.
It's getting out of the property is the big, big, big problem. Getting in should be okay, getting out, that's a whole other bag of chips.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, guys.
I have a question. Did you attend the public meetings? Did, did you attend the public meetings?
Well, I, no, I was not able to.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Well, thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Excellent, thank you.
The next card I have is Mr., I mean Cory Lee.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cory Lee, I'm at 714 Parkside Drive in Newport News. I am right in the midst of it, right in the midst of it. And I would, I would, it's, it's a hard no for me, I definitely disapprove of it because of the safety. Gentlemen just mentioned before, we put in an apartment building right in the middle of this one-lane section over here. We got kids, just as you mentioned, I was going to say the same thing, just as you mentioned, we got, of course, the apartment building, composed of a lot of kids, run across, run across the street to the Newport News Park, and, and that's, that's, that's what I, I think, I can see a, a big safety hazard. Not to mention, Fort Eustis, Fort Eustis Army Base is right there, it's already tons of traffic right now, right now. So we're going to add apartment building right there to add more traffic, because with apartment building, we got more cars, more people going to work, whether they work there or where, where somewhere else, it's going to cause a big, a huge headache that we already have now. I've seen a couple of times, because I run there in the, in the morning times as well, too, sometime on weekends, when it's slippery, being that we have the ditch on Old Fort Eustis Boulevard, it's cars that, that get, get, get tied up in the ditch, they fall in the ditch. I even seen a truck there one time, it went right in the ditch, and that halted a whole lot of, well, not traffic, but the whole time, people had to go around because of that little, that, that, that small street right there. It's a ditch that, that people would actually run into. They run into, they don't pay attention sometime, or they don't know that road, and they end up falling in, going into the ditch. I've seen it multiple times, as long as I've been there. I've been there probably about 27 years now. I've been, I'm retired Navy, and I end up staying there because I love the area, and I love it because it's quiet. And we do, the neighbors, all the neighbors pretty much know each other, we, you know, wave and say, you know, things like that, or whatever, but it's quiet. But how, how more people we got, and, and I was at the last, last meeting that was in, back in February, and they denied it because of, they said because of the, the street light, but you can add two or three street lights, it's still a lot of traffic that's going to be there, and it's going to cause a big headache, and it's going to be unsafe for the whole community around that area. Going up Jefferson, I see accidents all the time, going down toward Denby, toward, toward all the, all the shopping centers and stuff like this, accidents all the time on Jefferson. This would cause even more, even more accidents. And the last thing we need to have on my, our mind is to put a apartment building, and knowing it's unsafe for the whole community, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for Ms. Lee?
Did you attend the public meetings?
No, sir, I wasn't aware of it. If, if, if it was, I definitely would have been there. But I did attend the last meeting, that was in February.
Did you, also, Ms. Lee, did you hear that, that one of the proffers were to widen that road exiting Fort Eustis?
Yes.
And I know the ditch that you're talking about, if you turn hard right, you could end up in that ditch.
Yes, yes.
This widening, this widening component will be right there. So that road will be wider. So anyway, there's conversations that been had about potentially looking at that.
Okay.
So, any other questions for Ms. Lee? Anything here now? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
The next card I had is Ellen Fennell.
Eileen.
Eileen. Please come forward and state your name and address, Ms. Fennell.
My name is Eileen Fennell, and I live at 3 Scotch Pine Course, Newport News. In order to get out of my cul-de-sac, I have to make a right onto Cherry Creek, which crosses over Wood Creek, then I can make the left, which is two lanes, to go down and make the right on Old Stable. If a bus, an ambulance, Amazon, UPS is coming, I have to back up. That is not wide enough for two cars. Now, I'm hearing we're going to put a light, then I heard we couldn't put a light today. I heard we could put a light. I, I really don't know what's going on there. I believe you need 40 feet to make a U-turn. The traffic in that area, from 6:30, between school buses, Fort Eustis, and everybody else, people coming down from even Gloucester, come down Fort Eustis Boulevard to go to your job or to the interstate. Any morning, you turn on any news, the accident is at exit 250 on Fort Eustis, Fort Eustis or on I-64. The people responding to that, the local fire and EMS, are we going to get more of them? If we have a tragedy with somebody getting hit or yet another accident, I've got fire and EMS on I-64. Now we have a delay. I mean, you said no. No is no. When did no stop becoming no? We've been through this. I've been to the meetings. That area is extremely tiny. Anything that goes on in Newport News Park, you're locked in, or, you know, we have cops directing the traffic, and there's a lot of things that go on in the park. The park is wonderful, there's a lot of activities, I like to partake in them. But I can't walk from where I live to there because I'm disabled. New York City Emergency Medical Technician Disabled. Those are heroes, not people who play sports. I don't care whose name is attached to this. There is no traffic room in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fennell. Any questions for Ms. Fennell?
Yes. Did you participate in the public hearings?
Yes, she did.
She said she did.
She did.
I'll also, I'm sorry.
Hold on just a second, ma'am. Okay, the next item, next person's, next card I have is Mr. Forster, Dave. I'm sorry, sir, I can't...
He said he's not going to come up.
You're not going to come up? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Forster. The next card... This is being recorded, okay? Help me help you. The next item on the, the next card I have is Mr. Rincon. Rincon? Anton? Oh, I got that.
Hello, all right.
Say your name and address, sir, again.
Yes, my name is Anton Rikun, I live at 736 Longleaf Lane. My wife Tatiana was here just a minute ago. All right, so we have collected over 300 petitions, 260 of which were online and around 40, or there they were on, 240 were online and 60 were in-person. I have all of this here, and the petitions were obviously against the development. Also, on change.org that we have created, some people were leaving comments about this development, so I would just read those comments, and I will not read the ones that are very profane or very angry towards city council, obviously. All right, there's no, well, one person writes, "There's no way the small entrance to the Old Fort Eustis Boulevard can handle 200 cars. The road is already deteriorating with drainage issues. Traffic is safety risk to the Wood Creek and the pedestrian, and children are at risk to be hit by speeding cars. Years ago, we petitioned for speed bombs, are, of course, denied. It would be irresponsible to extend the traffic nightmare already in place with I-64 East Access and frequent traffic accidents at the, at that and the Wood Creek intersections. Please don't build it, don't build in that location. We're already overloaded with the people and traffic." Next comment. "Please do not build this major complex in this area, it will cause more traffic and possible accidents that we unnecessarily need." Thank you. Next comment. "The additional traffic that this will bring to the area will create additional headaches for the residents that have lived here. If there is a need to develop it, then make it additional houses, not an apartment complex." Next comment. "With that being built on Historic Lee Hill, with what has been built on the Historic Lee Hill property against the overwhelming wishes of the residents, our city, of our city, we must try to stop as many of these developments as possible." Next comment. "What do citizens in this area have to keep telling you? We don't want the zoning change necessary for these apartments." Next comment. "My family and I have only been in the neighborhood a short while, and we even know that this would be a bad idea. The roads get backed up already from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., whether, whether you're coming off the freeway, Jefferson Avenue, or from Fort Eustis Base. This is going to further congestion, not to mention taking away even more of what little habitat is left for, for our local wildlife. Leave the area alone, finish putting in sidewalks on Jefferson that were promised, and leave the area be." I guess that's all I have, and to answer your question prematurely, yes, I've been to all public hearings, public meetings with developer. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Do you have any? Thank you very much, Mr. Rincon. That was my last card. I'd like to go on record that I received numerous emails and messages about this, and I've read them all, so I just want to let you know, I heard you, I read them, and this is an issue that's before the commission, and it's a land use issue, and we want to make sure that we stay in accordance with the land use and that it's in accordance with the framework for the future. So with that being said, do you have any other comments?
Can I ask one question of the developer?
Yes, sir.
To the developer.
Hold on just a second, come forward.
Yep. I appreciate you, um, listening to the...
I'm Mr. Reed.
Keel.
Mr. Keel, I didn't even look up.
Right, Keel, right?
Keel, yes.
Mr. Keel. Keel. When are you planning on planting those trees that's going to get to the maturity in two and a half years, if this, if this project moves forward?
If it moves forward, it'll, it'll be planted right before our...
Construction.
Well, actually, after construction, right before the COs. Normally landscaping is done last.
Okay.
Yep.
Appreciate that. I just want that for clarification.
Got a question, too. Mr. Keels, thank you for being here today, and thank you for your remarks earlier. So, like, when, when you all were in the community meetings, did the, the topic of their congestion coming out of the apartment complex, which I know was not directly your problem, like the vehicle having to back up for the Amazon truck to come through, was that raised during you all's meetings with the community?
Um, yes, it was, I would say the main issue was traffic. During our community meetings, there was a lot of traffic, concerns about residents cutting through by the 711. Not so much, I mean, I'm, every time we do a meeting, I, I find out something new that, not so much about Old Fort Eustis, but yes, I mean, traffic has been the, the...
But yes, I mean, traffic has been the residents' sticking point. And, you know, like I said, we, we have addressed that. And the whole statement about the traffic light, yea or nay, maybe. The way that that works is, you know, we've proffered that we will pay for one if it's needed. We can't just pop up as developers. We can't just throw up stoplights at will. There has to be a decision that's made once the, the, the community is built. If there's a need for a stoplight, we will provide a stoplight. But we won't know until it's built and they come out and run further studies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Shook.
Attachment A14, the diagram shows the plantings to be new Leyland Cypress trees. And I think the discussion was that in two years, they'd be approximately 16 feet tall. From what I understand, mature Leyland Cypress is about 100 feet tall. They grow rapidly. They're very hardy in this area. Neighbor behind me has had one and in five years, it's over 60 feet tall and creates a great visual buffer. Is, is it the intent to use the Leyland Cypress that's listed here?
That is correct. So our intent is to create that buffer to separate the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Keel?
No. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir, for coming forward. All right. The matter, I would like to now formally close the public hearing unless there's someone else out there that didn't get a chance to put the card in. Would like to speak on behalf of this application. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. The matter is now before the commission.
I move that conditional change of zoning number CZ 2024-TAC 0001 be approved with the submitted proffers.
Second.
All right, it's the moving property second. Any other comments?
I guess I'll make a couple of observations. One, I appreciate everyone coming and speaking their half and their perspective, as well as the developer, everything you all have done to support full evaluation of this application. So I live in the Wood Creek area. A lot of the comments that were made are true, the observations that I made. My family lives there, right? And this is, this is my neck of the woods. I will say one thing in terms of the one entry and one exit, just again, an observation. There's been a lot of attention around the Old Stable Road lane. But for those who haven't traversed the area, there are other exits out of the neighborhood that can be used in event of emergency. It may take, maybe a little bit more inconvenient, but Woodside Lane, using Cherry Creek Road, getting to Wood Creek Road, exiting out. So it's, it's, the only observation I want to make is that it's not the only path of getting out of the neighborhood, getting out of the Wood Creek area. Again, for what it's worth. But at least wanted to, again, thank everyone for voicing their opinions, voicing their concerns. It's all been heard and I'm sure that'll support the evaluation of the commission here today.
I had a question for planning. Was there ever any conversation about widening the road on the neighborhood side? Not just the, like, here's the widening here, but this road that the neighborhood uses for access, there's, that seems to be overly narrow. Was there any conversation about widening that as well as a good faith gesture for the community?
I can only answer what the traffic impact analysis discussed. And we do have our Chief of Transportation, as well as the Assistant Director of Engineering, present in the hearing today. If they, if you'd like additional information as how that happens. Typically, proffers are, are written as to what is directly affected by your development in that area.
Right.
So I can't speak to why, you know, that was, what was determined, but perhaps they can further.
Right.
Okay. For, to be as order as possible. Thank you so very much, Commissioner. I mean, but we have a motion on the floor, we have a second, and we're asking questions towards.
Got you.
If you're going to pull up additional people, we're going to take back your motion and start over. Am I correct?
I don't think so. Just if, if you have, in the midst of your discussion, if there's a question, I don't see a problem with getting it answered.
Well, it's great.
But.
Good. Then I want to stand correctly. Please come forward if you can. May I have an answer to our questions in regards to the traffic? State your name and your address and your position, please.
Hello, my name is Lisa Frankenberger, Chief of Transportation, City Newport News.
Yes, Lisa.
Just to kind of answer that question, so we did proffer a right turn lane coming from Old Fort Eustis on to Old Stable Road. And part of that process is going to be updating the radius up to current standards, which is going to be much wider than what is out there today. So when right turning vehicles are turning on to Old Stable, they should be able to make that turn and stay within their side of the roadway, which is something that is difficult to accomplish now, but that right turn lane will help significantly.
I get that. Thank you so very much.
Yeah, I think my question was.
On the opposite side of.
On the opposite side that the neighborhood currently has challenges with. Was there ever any conversation? I understand what Flora was saying, that that's not really within the purview of the project. I just didn't know if there was any conversation ever about, as a goodwill gesture for that neighborhood, that that would have also been an improvement that would have benefited that community.
Considering that we don't anticipate any of the development traffic traversing that direction or coming for that direction, no, we do not.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
I'll just have a comment. When this first came before us, my, my main concern, well, it was a couple of concern. Not only the citizens concerned, and I do want to say right now to the developer and his people, I appreciate you for hearing the concerns and making yourself available and addressing the concerns and stating basically that it might have been a little rushed the first time it came through. It seems like it's much more thorough and for that I appreciate it. My, my, my big thing always is that I hear a lot in the community, not so much about affordable housing, but affordable homeownership. And even when I commented the first time, my, my main concern is how come we're not building more houses? I'll just be straight up. We need more homeowners, in my opinion. But that's just my opinion. Everything that the developer has done meets the ability to change the zoning. It is up to us as a city to decide if we're going to allow more multiple housing units. And if not, we need to change our plan so that we can emphasize more on keeping single-family units and not change zoning. But until that happens, there's nothing that this developer has now done in the secondary that will preclude not, not agreeing with what the planning department has recommended to us here today. And I'll just leave it at that.
With that being said. All good. Please call roll, Ms. Brown.
Commissioner Michelle.
Four.
Commissioner Williams.
Four.
Commissioner Shook.
Four.
Commissioner Diaz.
Again.
Commissioner Black.
Four.
Commissioner Taylor.
Four.
Motion carries five to one.
This matter will be heard by city council on December the 9th, 2025. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you all for listening. The next item on our agenda is CU change, conditional use permit CU 2025-TAC 0008. Ivy Baptist Church trustees. This will be presented to us on behalf, by Ms. Okiki. Excuse me, ma'am.
Good evening.
Excuse me, ma'am. Where are you going?
I thought you called me.
No, ma'am.
Not yet.
I know Ms. Okiki and I don't think I've been here that long.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Yes, presenting application CU 2025-8 for a request for a conditional use permit for the installation of an electronic display sign in conjunction with a community facility in a residential district. The trustees of Ivy Baptist Church are the applicants and owners of the property. Here's the property located at 50 Maple Avenue and contains 1.09 acres. Northwest and south are single-family homes and a vacant parcel on property zoned R4, single-family dwelling. East of the property are single-family homes on property zoned R3, single-family dwelling. The adopted One City One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map designates community facilities uses for the parcel. The church use is a community facility and is compatible with this designation. The property has been zoned R4, single-family dwelling since the citywide comprehensive rezoning became effective on August 1st, 1997. Electronic signs are regulated by the city's sign ordinance, which allows a community facility to install an electronic display sign in residentially zoned districts with the approval of a conditional use permit. No more than one electronic display sign is allowed on a developed site. The applicant is requesting to replace the reader board of the existing sign with an electronic display in line with these requirements. The sign ordinance also permits a 10-foot sign structure and a 32-square-foot electronic display area. The dimensions of the proposed sign are significantly less than the allowable height and area requirements. The proposed sign will have a height of seven and a half feet with an electronic display area of 19.9 square feet. Additionally, any electronic sign that is visible 250 feet from any portion of a single-family or multiple-family dwelling district shall not be illuminated between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. The sign falls within these distance limits set by the zoning ordinance and is therefore subject to restrictions on hours of illumination. Accordingly, illumination of the sign will be restricted during the late night and early morning hours. Electronic signage can create both environmental and visual impacts within a neighborhood, such as altering typical nighttime lighting conditions, reducing residents' enjoyment of outdoor spaces, and contributing to visual distraction for passing motorists and pedestrians. To minimize these impacts, the proposed sign will be programmed to remain well below brightness levels that have been shown to negatively affect surrounding residences. The display will include an automatic dimming controls that continuously adjusts illumination in response to ambient light conditions. When combined with the proposed limits on illumination, hours, and compliance with regulations for size and height, these measures will ensure that the sign remains compatible with the surrounding residential character and minimizes any effects on residents in the surrounding neighborhood. In conclusion, the proposed sign on property designated community facilities is consistent with strategies in the One City One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The proposed sign meets all the regulatory requirements cited in the sign ordinance for electronic display signs. As conditioned, the operation of the electronic display sign will observe the required lighting schedule and standards for brightness and display. Planning staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 2025-8 for the installation of an electronic display sign in conjunction with a community facility in a residential district at 50 Maple Avenue with 14 conditions that include the design, size, height, and illumination of the sign shall be in accordance with the submitted renderings and approved by the Director of Planning. Height and square footage shall not exceed those demonstrated in the submitted designs. Illumination of the sign will be restricted between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. The illumination of the, of the electronic portion of the sign shall be no greater than 10,000-foot candles from sunrise to sunset and no greater than 700-foot candles between sunset and sunrise. And flashing, scrolling, blinking, or any other type of intermittent illumination of the display shall be prohibited. All other standard conditions also apply. All 14 conditions are detailed in the staff report and will be part of the ordinance approved by council. And lastly, any questions?
Yes, I have a quick question. Ms. Okiki, is this in addition to the signage that's presently there or is it going to replace what's presently there?
It's just going to replace the existing reader board with an electronic display area.
Okay, it's going to be built in the same location?
Yes.
I had a question too. In a couple of places, it talks about the foot candles being reduced from sunset to sunrise. But then in other places, it talks about the sign not being illuminated at all between 10:00 p.m. and sunrise. So is it actually that it's going to be reduced to 700-foot candles between sunset and 10:00 p.m.? And then from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., it will never be illuminated?
Correct.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other question for Ms. Okiki?
And just looking at the.
Is that a question, sir?
Yes. And just looking at the picture, it looks like the signage basically is, is the same.
Yes.
Same, same design, just electronic.
Yeah, just electronic. So same area, same square footage.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? All right, hearing done, so thank you so very much.
Thank you.
With that being said, this matter is now before the commission. Uh, we only have one card and that was the applicant. And, and I apologize, Ms. Ms. Chambers? I knew I was going to do it. I apologized already. Blame it on my brain and not the heart. Ms. Chambers, will you, what, come speak? You were already up here before we even got started, so you might want to come, come on, finish. State your name and your address, ma'am.
That's a mistake. My name is Gail Chalmers. I'm a trustee at Ivy Baptist Church, 50 Maple Avenue. And I was here to get permission to put this display up and so we can move that. And it will not be displayed between 10:00, 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. every day. It will cut off and it will be only be used when it's regular and should be used.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chambers.
And that, that's it.
Any questions?
No, ma'am.
Thank you so very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
With that being said, I'll now close the public hearing. If I didn't already open it. So I will close the public hearing and then the matter is now before the commission.
Chairperson Taylor, I recommend approval of the recommendation for CU-2025-0008 as written.
Section.
It's a moving property second. Any other comments? Hearing none, please call roll.
Commissioner Williams.
Four.
Commissioner Shook.
Four.
Commissioner Diaz.
Four.
Commissioner Black.
Four.
Commissioner Michelle.
Four.
Commissioner Taylor.
Four.
Motion unanimous, six to zero.
This matter will be heard by city council on December the 9th, 2025. The next, the next item we have on our agenda is conditional use permit CU 2025-TAC 0009, Woods Road LLC and Green Clean Auto Wash. This will be presented by also, by Ms. Okiki.
Yes, for this case, CU 2025-9, Woods Roads I LLC and Green Clean Auto, the owner and applicant are requesting a conditional use permit for the operation of a car wash. The property is located at 671 J. Clyde Morris Boulevard and contains 1.57, 1.57 acres. The property has frontage on J. Clyde Morris Boulevard and Woods Road. It is surrounded by commercial properties such as a wellness center, fast food restaurants, a window tinting establishment, and smoke shop. The adopted One City One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map designates community commercial uses for the parcel and the proposed use aligns with this designation. The property is surrounded by C1 and C2 zones, as well as R7 High Density Residential. The property has been zoned C1 Retail Commercial since the citywide comprehensive rezoning became effective on August 1st, 1997. And now I'll go over the key regulatory requirements that apply to the site. Site regulations require a landscape strip that is at least 10 feet wide or 10% of the existing or proposed right-of-way width, whichever is greater. The proposed site plan meets these requirements with landscaping along both J. Clyde Morris Boulevard and Woods Road. As part of the site design, the existing J. Clyde Morris Boulevard entrance and 11 parking. parking spaces along that frontage will be removed and replaced with new landscaping to meet current site plan standards and enhance the property's visual appeal. Because of the closure of the J. Clyde Morris entrance and potential impacts to traffic and circulation, a Class 1 site plan is required. This plan will be reviewed by the Site Plan Review Committee and approved by the Director of Planning. And finally, 10 feet of right-of-way along Woods Road will be dedicated to the city, increasing the total width from 50 to 60 feet to meet public street requirements. Several factors were considered by staff in reviewing the site and developing our recommendation. While the proposed use is generally consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, it does raise some concerns, primarily the continued proliferation of car washes throughout the city. Using this property for a car wash limits opportunities for other potentially more beneficial uses. The proposal, however, aligns with other goals of the comprehensive plan, such as encouraging the adaptive reuse of existing buildings and the prevention of long-term commercial vacancies. This site sits along a major corridor, and the applicant has taken steps to enhance its appearance and compatibility with the surrounding area. Mechanical equipment and the onsite dumpster are fully screened from public view, and required landscaping will be installed to improve visual quality along J. Clyde Morris Boulevard. The new landscaping will also help screen parking areas and equipment while enhancing the site's overall appearance. In addition, an eight-foot-tall fence will be installed along the rear property line to provide screening for nearby office and residential properties and to help reduce noise generated by the car wash. In conclusion, the proposed use of a car wash is consistent with several strategies outlined in the One City One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The site and building design help mitigate potential impacts on surrounding properties while also preventing long-term vacancy and enhancing the visual appearance of a major city corridor. Planning staff recommend approval of conditional use permit CU 2025-9 for the operation of a car wash at 671 J. Clyde Morris Boulevard with 19 conditions that include: The submittal of a site plan, a Class 1 site plan to be approved by the Director of Planning, the submittal of a landscape plan in accordance with zoning and site regulations, the materials, design, and placement of fencing, signage, and onsite dumpster to also be submitted and approved by the Director of Planning. All other standard conditions also apply, and all 19 conditions are detailed in the staff report and will be part of the ordinance approved by council. And that concludes. Any questions?
Do we have any questions for Ms. Okiki? Hearing none. Thank you so very much, Ms. Okiki.
Thank you.
I have a couple of cards on this one, and... It may come back to bite me, but I'm not. The first out, I'd like the applicant to come forward and speak on behalf of this, on this application, and that's Mr. Rosie again. Welcome back, sir.
Sir, hey. Long time no see.
Yeah, it was good.
Yeah, well, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the commission. Again, for the record, my name is Tyler Rose, attorney with the law firm Williams Mallon. Business address is 222 Central Park Avenue, Suite 1700, Virginia Beach, Virginia. I'd like to thank staff for the hard work on the application, presentation, and for the recommendation of approval. Applicant has reviewed the conditions and finds them acceptable. As mentioned, this is an adaptive reuse of a former Rite Aid pharmacy. Green Clean has become an industry leader in this type of adaptive reuse. It is a complicated process, but one that will allow it to breathe new life into an existing building and also recycle a lot of that material as well. So Green Clean has successfully developed these type of pharmacies throughout Hampton Roads, including one in Newport News on Warwick Boulevard, which I believe opened recently. And I think that actually has been pretty well received so far, and they've been well received throughout the community as well. So, but Green Clean invests heavily into their communities. They've revitalized vacant buildings. They create jobs with and through their managerial programs, pride themselves on promoting internally to managerial positions throughout the company. They make car washes available for community fundraising events, and they have the Green Clean Cares Program, which provides grants and donations to local communities and nonprofits, and this site is a reflection of their further investment in the region and the city. The applicant worked very closely with staff on this site, ended up actually flipping the site, went through a lot of iterations. There was a lot of input on this site, but I think we resulted in a good product that's compliant with the zoning ordinance. And so it's going to be a single tunnel car wash. There'll be seven interior vacuum spaces, 12 vacuum spaces in the rear of the property. That was kind of the primary design challenge, and the iteration we went through was moving the vacuum parking onto the back of the property there so they're not visible from J. Clyde. And also, as mentioned, we're reducing traffic concerns along J. Clyde by removing that entrance. Car washes uses generally are a less intense use than pharmacy uses. And additionally, the entrance on Wood Roads is going to be on the very back of the property, so there won't be any concerns about stacking into that intersection, so the access will be actually towards the rear of the property as well. As mentioned, and Green Clean prides themselves on enhanced landscaping along J. Clyde, so it will be a much more attractive visual from the road, and there will be an eight-foot fence along the back of the property, not only for visual mitigation, but also noise mitigation from the vacuums back there. And the vacuums, they do make available to the public for free without having to access the car wash during normal business hours as well. So in conclusion, this is an innovative adaptive reuse of a vacant building, provides a community asset by a company that's heavily invested in Hampton Roads and the city. So I'll thank you for your consideration. We would respectfully request a recommendation of approval. I'll stand by for any questions. We also have the project engineer here as well if there's any questions that I can't answer.
Okay. My quick question is, in reference to the one that we just opened on Warwick, you said this is going to have a single bay, so it's going to be a small unit?
I... Was that one single bay as well?
Yeah.
Single, I'm sorry, single tunnel. Yeah, so if you look at the site plan, the entrance is at the bottom here, so it'll single tunnel car wash, and then there's vacuum parking on the other side of the...
Okay.
So there's interior vacuum parking, but then there's just a single tunnel for the actual car wash.
Okay.
Yeah, so the entrance there is at the bottom. That's kind of the paced kiosks, and then you loop around, and that first line is the car wash bay and then tunnel, and then there's vacuum parking interior to that, and then there's vacuum exterior parking on the top side of the facility.
Yeah, because that was my question, that leads me to my question, because you could see from the existing one today and on Warwick, you see right into the unit from Warwick Boulevard.
Yeah.
So that's the bay that you'll be entering to. You go around and come in through that end.
Right, so there'll be opaque windows, so you won't be able to actually see into the... Is that what you were talking about?
Yes.
Right, so they'll be opaque windows, you can't actually see into the car wash tunnel.
Okay.
Is that right, Flor?
Okay. Flor had something to do with it?
Oh, no. She laid the hammer down.
I know. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I apologize if I didn't open the public hearing, but I'm opening it now, and I do have two cards in addition to the applicant. So I have Ms. Grace Henderson.
Yep, so my name's Grace Henderson, business address 4525 Main Street in Virginia Beach. I think Tyler probably hit all the high points, but I am with Kimberly Horn, representing as the civil engineer on the project. We've done a majority of the Green Clean's and Hampton Roads, and I do think probably most of the highlights have been hit already. So yeah, available for really any questions. And appreciate staff, all the hard work on this one. We did definitely go through some iterations and appreciate all the collaboration.
I'm going to ask the question anyway. All the Rite Aids that are closed. So are we talking in that you potentially... Because we thought when it was first brought to us in the previous one, and it was like, okay, this will be a good flip, all the Rite Aids, but then now it's like, all the Rite Aids?
So yeah, they're definitely a great opportunity to, as Tyler mentioned, on the vacant building reuse. I do know Green Clean is not the only business out there, not even to say car washes, but other uses, looking at that more adaptive reuse model. I personally have worked on other projects, adaptive reuse style projects in Norfolk that are more multifamily residential, so I think it's just something developers are looking for at the moment.
Are they doing the studies that you do on any other business regards to, back to the one that I live? I live in the Warwick area, up in the Denby area. There's four car washes, and within five miles, I would say eight car washes.
That is definitely a topic that's brought up by most of municipalities around in Hampton Roads, and I don't have any of that data personally, but I do know, you know, all these businesses are looking to be viable businesses, so I... They are finding that they have the customers to serve the volume. Green Clean specifically, their model, they have a subscription program, so I know a lot of their users are subscribers, so they have, I believe, like a tag on their car, and they're able to kind of jump through the pay stations relatively quickly without going through the menu or even speaking to any employees. And so with that subscription, I know they look to have multiple locations to serve, you know. There might be one in your neighborhood, but maybe one near your work, and have their customers kind of hitting multiple locations.
Okay. Got one question here.
With the vacuums located along the backside of the property, what is the decibel level estimated at the fence line that you're putting in? On the far side of the fence? Basically, how it impacts?
Oh, on the...
The residents behind that.
Outside of the fence. So, well, right behind is commercially-zoned properties, and I don't have a decibel level to give you at this time. It's definitely something we can dig into more. But with the layout revisions we did, there's only the one row of exterior vacuum, so there's actually also only one vacuum producer on site, where typically you'll see two or even more on a car wash site, so.
But the vacuum... The vacuum's going to be against the building itself and... Right? Okay. So we got that parking lot, and then you're going to have foliage, or you're going to plant a barrier, which is in the red, right?
And the fence.
And the fence line.
And the fence line, yep.
Before we get to the properties behind it.
Yeah, and that specific fence, Green Clean did on one of their sites in Virginia Beach, that's directly adjacent to residentially-zoned properties. It got a lot of positive feedback. It's kind of like a nice aesthetic fence that kind of pairs well with some of the landscaping. Green Clean typically does enhanced landscaping, so exceeding code minimum requirements, and they definitely pride themselves on their maintenance of their site, so their employees are actively moving around site, cleaning up trash, and any, you know, maintenance that needs to occur.
Okay. Any other questions from Ms. Henderson? Thank you so very much. The next card I have, and this is Ms. Parker. Please come forward and state your address, your name and address, ma'am.
My name is Donna Parker. I live at 19 Forest Drive, Newport News, about 1,000 feet from where they're going to plan this car wash. And they talk about the commercial area. There's eight apartment complexes behind this area on Forest Drive and Woods Road, eight. That's the only light for that area. We already have a traffic issue at that light. We don't need another one. Also, you got walkers, you have children running around, you have two mini-marts that kids go to. We don't need the extra traffic at that area. That's just my opinion. You have 17 car washes in the city of Newport News between Rich Neck Road and Mercury Boulevard. I have two within a quarter mile of this issue. You've got a riptide and a soaping suds. Then you've got five more within two miles. So I don't really believe we need another car wash, especially in that area with the traffic the way it is. I mean, we have hundreds of walkers every day in that area. It's a low-income area, and a lot of people don't have vehicles they walk to and from. And that's my main issue with having more invited traffic to the area.
Yes, ma'am.
And you can ask your codes and compliance, they get calls all the time about that traffic like at Woods Road and J. Clyde. It takes sometimes three cycles to get off of Woods Road. And there are other ways to go. You can go around by Wendy's and get out there, but that puts you, ties you up in that evening traffic or midday traffic, or you can go out Forest Drive by the, I think it's Miller Mart now, but you have issues there because it's just major traffic and you have major walkers all the time. So I think this is not a good place for a car wash. Not the fact that we have five within less than a mile and a half radius, so that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, we have a quick question for you, Ms. Parker.
Sure.
Again, a point of clarification, you say you're about 1,000 feet away.
I live on Forest Drive. I'm on the same road. I mean, I could walk there. I just could do it in five minutes, it'd take me 15 now.
I assume noise studies were made in regards to this and not disturbing the neighborhood?
Well, you got two businesses between this complex and the residential area.
Okay.
There's outdoor visions and colonial extermination.
Right.
Buildings between you that before you hit the residential.
I just wanted to make sure clarification in terms of noise and the impact to the neighborhood that's behind the commercial entity with the vacuum.
No, it's not the noise I'm worried about, it's the traffic.
It's the traffic, okay.
I mean, we've had... I've lived there all my life.
Come back forward, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is recorded.
We've had two fatalities from walkers on Jefferson Avenue.
Yeah.
Here in the last five years. So, you know, it's a walking district, and to add more traffic to that, I think would be a mistake.
Yes, ma'am.
Understood. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Any other questions for Ms. Parker? Thank you for coming forward. Thank you. That completes the cards that I had on this case. Any comments? Now that I close the public hearing, this matter is now before the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moving that we recommend approval of CU-2025-0009 as presented with conditions.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in properly second. Any additional comments? Hearing none? Call roll.
Commissioner Shook?
Four.
Commissioner Dias?
Against.
Commissioner Black?
Four.
Commissioner Michelle?
Four.
Commissioner Williams?
Four.
Commissioner Taylor?
Four.
Motion carries five to one.
This matter will be heard by City Council, excuse me, December 9th, 2025. The next item on our agenda is zoning text amendment ZT 2025 Tag 0006, City of Newport News, and this will be presented to us by Mrs.?
Ayoka.
Ayoka Hall. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This amendment proposes to change to Chapter 45 zoning ordinance, Article 5, General Regulation, Section 45-530, self-service ice vending units. The purpose of the amendment is to revise and clarify the standards governing self-service ice vending units. Specifically, the proposal would reduce the minimum lot size requirement for such units from two acres to three quarters of an acre or greater, and clarify that a self-service ice vending unit may not be the principal use or structure on a lot, but must remain subordinate to the principal building. Under the current ordinance, these units are permitted only on lots two acres or larger. This limitation has effectively restricted their placement to shopping centers or industrial properties where larger sites can accommodate them. The proposed amendment introduces greater flexibility by allowing ice vending units on smaller commercial parcels while maintaining appropriate circulation, site functionality, and compatibility with surrounding development. The added clarification that these units must remain accessory to a principal use reinforces that they are supplemental in nature and similar to other vending operations and not intended to function as standalone businesses. This amendment is intended to expand opportunities for the operation of self-service ice vending units outside of large shopping centers while preserving their accessory-use relationship and ensuring orderly site development. The Regulation Committee reviewed the proposed amendment on August 20th, 2025, and recommended approval. It is recommended that the Planning Commission recommend to City Council adoption of the zoning ordinance text amendment ZT 2025-0006. Any questions?
I just a quick question. I just want to make sure that I understand. So it can be on a small lot, so it don't have to be a shopping center, but it cannot be like a standalone, like you just driving down the street and...
Correct.
You just see this big box that says ice, okay.
That is correct. We are seeking to reduce the minimum requirement from two acres to three-quarter of an acre, but it cannot be a standalone unit.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments? Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Thank you. Thank you.
This matter is now before the commission. I'm sorry. I'd like to open the public hearing. It's been a long day. I do have one card on this one. Now everybody wants to help me.
That one I can read.
This is Ms. Tim Davis.
It's me.
Ms. Davis, thank you for staying around, sir. I know it was hard back there, but thank you for staying around. Please state your name and your address, please, sir.
Tim Davis, 30 Elm Avenue, Newport News. So I'm here to speak in favor of the ordinance change. My wife and I are the owners of the only two ice vending machines in the city. We've been wanting to expand this business across the city, but this ordinance restriction of two acres or larger has prohibited us from being able to expand our business. We've been in the city now operating for 13 years successfully. We sell ice at half the price from most convenience stores and grocery stores, which is why we're successful, and our customers love these machines, and they get a lot of use in the summertime particularly. So this ordinance change would be very beneficial to us and the citizens, because we get a lot of use from restaurants, from contractors, from a whole variety of citizens that really appreciate the use and the affordability of the ice that they purchase. Just as a quick note, there's 4,000 of these machines across the country. They've taken on as a business model over the delivery ice business and because of their popularity and convenience and price, and this is going to be the wave of the future for how ice is being sold. And I think the delivery, ice delivery business is going to start to... It's fading. It's been fading for years, but it's eventually going to fade out, eventually, I think, permanently and over the next few years. So anyhow, any questions? I'm here to answer anything offered. Yes, sir.
Ms. Shook. Commissioner Shook, please.
Ms. Taylor, I understand that you have two machines right now, but one of them, because of redevelopment of Sherwood Shopping Center, is disappearing, and you had been looking for other two-acre sites and had no success.
That's what prompted this, was we have a machine on the Sherwood Shopping Center, which was purchased by the city of Newport News for redevelopment, so we were being asked to move our machine, and we were having difficulty in finding another location because of this restriction in the ordinance to find another place for our machine. The customer, we have a very, very strong base, customer base in that region where that machine is located. That's our best performing machine that we have, and so we really welcome this change in order for us to have another location and, again, to expand in other parts of the city.
Thank you very much, Tim. Any other questions for Ms. Davis?
I hope you find a good location for that machine, because I'm there often.
Thank you. I appreciate the business.
And that's the end of that.
Yeah, just kudos to the staff here to have invited me to come to the Rules Committee meetings and to share all the information about the business, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Davis. With that being said, I will close the public hearing on this matter, and now the matter is before the commission. Zoning text amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of ZT-2025-0006 as presented with conditions.
Second. Okay, so moved in properly second. Please call roll.
Commissioner Diaz?
Four.
Commissioner Black?
Four.
Commissioner Michelle?
Four.
Commissioner Williams?
Four.
Commissioner Shook?
Four.
Commissioner Taylor?
Four.
Motion unanimous, six to zero.
This matter also will be heard on December the ninth, 2025, by City Council. The next item on our agenda is Executive Secretary Report that will be presented by Ms. McAllister.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Board of Zoning Appeals on October the 15th, approved special exception for a development on a lot that's less than 50 feet wide at 1138 28th Street, and we have one case coming up for November the 19th. It's a special exception for an additional accessory structure, which will basically be larger than the main structure, so that's why it needs a special exception.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Ms. McAllister.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Ms. McAllister? None. The next item is committee reports.
Yes, we have our third meeting of the Citizen Advisory Committee as a part of the South Central Jefferson Avenue Study.
Yes, sir.
That takes place on... Will take place November 13th at 5:30 at the Biddingham Midtown Community Center.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Black. Any other? All right. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Quick question. Our next meeting is on what date?
Nineteenth.
The 19th?
Nineteenth.
And then we meet again in December? Or are we going to meet in December early?
Mm-hmm. We're meeting in December.
Okay. With that being said, no other new business? Let us meet in adjourned.